...out in the end, but I'd like to call this through the order of the East Porter County School Board for Monday, February the 24th work session. So would you all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda for this evening is the public input. And now is the time to hear from our community as we are now beginning the public comment portion of the East Porter County School Board work session. And we welcome your comments and value your input. However, please do note that this is a school board meeting held in public, not a school board meeting held with the public. And this distinction means that while we welcome your input, we are here to conduct board business and not answer questions or interact in a back and forth dialogue with the community. Rather, this public session and comment portion of the meeting provides an opportunity for the community to provide comments. I might like to quickly go over a few ground rules before we get started. When called from the public comment signup list, comments should be directed to the board as a whole rather than to any individual member. And each speaker is limited to three minutes with a total of 30 minutes allotted for all comments. If multiple individuals are here to speak on the same subject, we encourage you to select one representative to speak to the group. Any derogatory remarks or direct disrespect towards any board member, staff, or teacher, or student will not be tolerated. In the event of such behavior, you'll forfeit your time and may be asked to leave the meeting. Please be aware that personnel matters will not be addressed during this meeting as discussions of specific employees are not appropriate for public forum. We appreciate, thank you for attending and sharing your thoughts. I have two people outside of the, you missed somebody, somebody else? Want to speak up this evening? Okay, well, Micah Bell, you first on the list or first on the signup?
Good evening. I'm actually here, my wife, a teacher at Washington Township High School, is not feeling well. She made it through school day, but didn't want to be here today. Hopefully she can rest up and be back in the classroom tomorrow. So I am reading this on her behalf. Hello, my apologies for not being here in person, but I'm currently fighting an illness. My name is Beth Bell and I'm a high school math teacher at Washington Township. I currently teach Algebra II, AP Precalc, and AP Calculus, but I also taught various other math courses during my 23 years at WTE. I am writing you tonight to ask you to consider keeping the Cuda software for me to use in my classroom. I know that keeping the software requires you to find money, not only from software, but also for a desktop on which it can run. However, I hope to show you that this is not just a want, but a need in my classroom. As a veteran teacher, I feel it is my duty to consider the needs of my students individually each year. I believe that to be a great teacher, you need to assess the material being taught each year, note what works and what doesn't work, and adjust accordingly for the next year. In order to do this well in my math class, I need the ability to alter the math assignments as needed in a timely manner. Not only do I adjust year to year, but also date to day. When I see that students are struggling in a particular topic, I need to be able to produce more math problems over that topic right away in order to give them more practice before moving on to the next topic. The Cuda software allows me to do just that. The software, I am able to tell it exactly what types of problems I need and can be specific about what numbers or format I wanted to have. For example, in my Algebra II class, we've been working on using transformations to graph functions that have been shifted or stretched. Each problem is different depending on where a number is placed in the function. I can tell Cuda software exactly where I want to number my function and have it produce as many problems as I want of that type. Gives me instant remedial work along with the answers. I can't tell you how many times I've had students ask if I have more review problems so they can get ready for a quiz or a test. With the Cuda software, I am able to instantly produce more practice for them. When I voiced my concerns about being able to produce new material easily to the East Porter IT department, I was told that the corporation just wanted the teachers to use the materials that came with our textbooks. I was given instructions on how the worksheets that came with the textbooks could be edited. I followed those instructions and I can tell you it was a nightmare. The worksheets that came with our math textbooks can be edited, but do not reproduce new problems. In order to use those worksheets, I must save them in one format, change them to a different format, change all the numbers myself, do all the problems myself to get the answers, and then after all that, I still can't tailor it to my direct needs. I'll be honest and say that if all I have, this is all I have to work with, I would end up using the same material from year to year, wouldn't have extra remedial work handy, and my students would suffer. I just don't have enough time in a day to rewrite math problems and come up with answers of my own over and over again. To be an effective teacher, I need the materials that help me to do so. The Cuda software has been a game changer throughout the years and is definitely a need and not a want if you want me to do what is best for the students of East Porter. I know it may be hard to understand the difference between the Cuda software and using the material from the textbooks, so I am personally inviting you, the school board, to visit my classroom where I can show you. Please let me know if you would like to take me up on the software. Thank you for your time and feel free to contact me with a question. So that's her statement. And I can tell you, over the years, more times than I can count when she has come home, said, "I need to remake these study sheets" or whatever for her students the next day. If she can't do it by software, she's having to do it by hand. And honestly, I want my wife back. The amount of school or time she puts in for the students, after hours, outside of contract time and at home is ridiculous. My son and my other son would back me up on that. So if this software makes it easier for her to do remediation for the students on the spot, literally, I've seen her do it. She goes in what she wants, tells it to redo it, and she can generate a handout for a student in class or when they come back around for study hall or whatever. So, you know, that's kind of a big deal. And as my student gets ready to graduate, if I had more students coming up through the high school, I would definitely want this. I know what a pain it is to have to take something in a format that doesn't work, edit it to make it work, and how much time that can take. She's a math teacher. She's not a graphic artist. She's not a programmer. She needs something that works, that works right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next up, we have, can you hear it, Noel Branson?
Hello, hello. It's a tough act to follow. Really, I got nothing to gripe about right now. I'm sure you guys have had wonderful conversations about me this last week. I apologize we're getting pushed to this. I apologize that obstruction is the role of the school corp right now in opposed to transparency. I hope you all tonight change that. You have good things to talk about. You're talking about it in the public for the first time. The first time you're talking in the public about what needs to be done, not just saying yes to everything that's coming through. So, thank you. I guess I do have one, right? Why is it, and he's not here to defend himself, but why is it that Dr. Case sends you an agenda with all the attachments, then removes all the attachments for the public, and then after you vote on them, gives them back? Why can't the public see that before you vote on that? Isn't that the whole purpose? Could there not be a flaw in there that needs to be rectified? Perhaps you're being asked to vote on a five-year contract and you weren't provided that? Wouldn't you want someone from the public telling you that? Hey, it says vote for five years, but it's only a three-year option. You literally had that last time. Is that a little embarrassing? Yeah. You know what's really embarrassing? Lawsuits. Those are really embarrassing. But don't let that happen. First agenda item tonight? Please talk about it. Please get the information to the people's hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Noel Branson. The first item we have for discussion, and this is a work session, is a discussion for a policy for preparation and distribution of agenda materials. And Policy 1302, the agenda preparation and distribution of materials, we don't really have a current policy on this. And this has been a topic of discussion and I've included, or Dr. Case is included. And then others have put into here an example from the Indiana School Board Association. And at the bottom of the presentations here, we blended some of them and included something at the end for public distribution. Dr. Case and the executives at the central office have taken from conversations that they've had with the school board and other districts, and this would be a new policy. If the board would like to add a day count, the recommendation would be no more than three days. And our goal is to get it out certainly on Thursday morning, but that doesn't always happen. And we should at least have more information on this particular policy.
That was pretty much my information. You nailed it right there. So I think the question is just what input does the board have for the development of this policy?
Have any board members that'd like to make some suggestions? Talk about the policy? We would then have it for a first reading at the next public session, March 10. Any more discussion? Okay.
Was there also a draft of this or are we just going based on? So you've got the one for, from the ISBA with several examples, and then we have our own draft in here as well?
The only one you have because we do not currently have a policy on this. So this is the suggestions that you have. So it says maybe titled draft, but it's the same thing.
I just would like to stick with when it comes to... I would just, does the ISBA have one that they specifically? Is that what's on here right now or is that something that we came up with?
There's three are theirs.
Those three are theirs. Okay, so any of those three? I mean, the ISBA tends to have a pretty good, pretty good example. I just didn't know if there was an additional draft that I wasn't seeing. Okay, I know some of those have those.
And they usually give several different examples.
Right.
And they give, over the years, they've given a zillion different examples that may even tell you do or do not need to have a policy on this.
Right.
Because some school corporations do. And I'm not saying on this.
Right.
Because this has been enough of an issue that we need.
Right.
But the whole intent of what we did, I've been in this, sitting here 32 years, there was never any intention of not being transparent. I assure you, we checked with Indiana School Board Association on every policy that was ever written. Julie Slavens has been there forever and other attorneys that have been there forever. And so that wasn't the attention, the intention. Even as laws change, our policies become outdated. And that's one of the reasons why you have to review them every three or four years. So I, I just want to say that because I've been here the longest and know what the intent is. The intent is, you know, we've, we've wanted our public to feel like they could approach board members, to approach anybody they wanted for 32 years. And then we also believe in chain of command. So balancing those two things. The one thing that I would say about the one that's recommended to us, I, I would like to see it be three days in advance as opposed to the day of.
That's what I agree with you. Distribution to the board or the public?
To the public, to both. You know, there are times when the public, in my many years of, the many roles I've been in as a dad and a granddad and a father and a farmer and a school board president and all the different things, you get input from lots of different people. And you can either take it or not take it. But you gotta have some time to look at it.
But we got it that's the...
I would say that would be my recommendation.
Then we would have that for a first reading.
Well, I have a question too about it. So would that mean that even the work session agenda would also be public?
Three days before.
I mean, I think that would be helpful. For example, one of the attachments is about class sizes and I know teachers have been asking about those. And so that would be...
Yeah, I mean, I'm for that too. I just wanted to clarify because it doesn't clarify the difference between the business and the work session. I just wanted to make sure that the agenda for both, are we talking about the agenda for both?
Yeah, board meetings, work session, right. Yeah.
Oh, it does say that? I'm sorry, okay.
Is there an example that you prefer over one or the other? Or a recommendation from Dr. Case? Does any of you need it?
I think it's recommended. I think you said, yeah. The recommendation is fine. It's a blend of, they usually give you, state school boards usually gives you four, three or four recommendations that are actually taken from different school corporations who have adopted the different examples. That's what they are. And so you can blend them any way you want to blend them. So I think the recommendation is fine if we add that about the three days instead of the day of. Sounds good.
So does that make it Friday then?
That's what I think.
Just to clarify, is it the board's hope that it would be work session and business meeting?
I take it as that. Yeah.
So Bob, I have one more question. There's been times when we've had like last minute add-ons. Does that look suspicious that we suddenly have changes? If there's, you know, a hire or a change in policy or, you know, like, there's been changes where we try to get stuff in by Monday, especially coming, people come to Dr. Case or to the district saying, "Hey, I need this in by Monday." Field trips, sporting events. And so like if things start to change at the end, you think the public's going to be like, oh, so they're constantly adding stuff? And we try to do our best to get stuff in. You do, that's why I was thinking like...
We're working in session so they can hear the, what we're saying. We are trying to, we are trying to do that. So I don't know. One of the policies has an emergency clause in it of coming up policies.
Yeah.
I know that it's hard. You principals, I mean, talk to me. It's hard sometimes to get them in the day of correct. I mean, three days ahead.
The third example has the language that is not lockstep. It says, "The agenda together with supporting materials shall be distributed to board members in advance, preferably..."
Yeah, preferably.
Thank you. "No less than three days prior to the board meeting." So it's not saying that if there is some things that, you know, but we prefer to have it out, you know, at least in the majority.
Well, I don't think that the public is mostly concerned about the field trips anyway. I mean, I don't think that's the thing that they need to treat.
The thing that usually comes up last minute is a personnel issue or addition, right? And so that, the problem with not adding that is that you have to wait a whole another month to get it approved if you don't add it and get that information. Otherwise, we try to begin in...
You think usually the system, right? And I can pass it out of the...
Yeah, it's a bit off.
Yeah.
So when we, yeah, when we have those additions, usually making the agenda and saving for vice.
So currently, when is, when are the things that are put on the agenda given to Dr. Case? Like when is the deadline? It's the Wednesday before the meeting?
For certain things. So if it's a suggestion for a purchase or... Help me, different things like...
Something we're contracting for or...
Those things we try to get ahead of time. You know, we might have an idea of this, we'd like to make this purchase, but we might not have all the quotes in. You know, we're trying to get those in. Those might come in last minute. But really, last minute things that come up are the personnel report and the plans list. And those are just really hard to get done with doing payroll the same week with three people in our office.
And we're actually trying to see if we can get some of those items even a week earlier so that we can get those out to share or review before they would come to a meeting just so that the board would be able. So sometimes, like Ken said, we don't, we may not have the exact quotes that are coming along if we've put those out, but we can give the generalities of what the request is going to be. And then after it gets closer and then it becomes your information those three days before it would have the final.
An example like Angela's E-Rate project, her bid opening is Friday. So we'll have that bid opening on Friday. We'll have the recommendation, but, you know, and then we'll get it in. But those are kind of the things that come up more later than, and they have to be advertised for so many days before we can...
Right.
But then my...
Yeah, you guys know, affects some of that. I'm good with switching those two paragraphs.
Yeah, I am too.
So it'd be paragraph two of, correct? Example three with the, what is paragraph four of the recommendation? Got a couple of good note takers here. It's recorded so we'll know exactly what it's...
Thank you for your specificity.
And then that would be, again, first reading of the next board. Okay, good, thank you. The next subject to be is policy for development, adoption, and implementation of policies. This is Policy 1400. And the recommendation is to scrap the old policy and again, look at the very good policies that the Indiana School Board Association has. And this is because of eliminating the board policy committee and changing the process. ISBA has two different versions. And in looking at the two different versions, the recommendation would be that number two. The biggest thing we all need to consider or take into consideration on this particular policy is public input. Do we want to open up and have the public comment and give input after each individual policy? Or just during the public comment section? So this is, Nick, I think you might have some other things.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're just looking for your input. When you, you look on here, example one wasn't really marked except first part, and then you'll see example two. And then there is a draft. The draft appears that that still has the language of policy committee. So if you're staying in that realm, then that would be kind of the draft that we'd be looking at and we can adjust based off there depending on if you want to go with one of the ISBA languages or what that direction is. And then the current policy is also attached there for your records.
So any input, suggestions from the board?
I personally think that public can just comment on all of them during the public comment and go individually, but...
Okay, good, good point.
I have noticed that at some of the meetings, we have allowed, you know, in certain circumstances, we do need to get more input on that, you know, from, I believe when, I'm trying to think of an example over the last couple of months, but we've actually, and these are when we have lengthy agendas too, right? Well, they publicly commented, then they're like an hour and a half early by, and then we have to kind of revisit something. So I don't think that it, I wouldn't want to limit public comment to just that section because at times we do need to, you know, it would make more sense to, you know, to maybe look at that during that specific agenda item. So I would hate to limit us on that and just having it at the beginning.
Any other comments?
You know, we've allowed it before.
Any other comments? I'll be all right down there. Well, I would say to take that into consideration, we use the same word, the preferences for comment in advance. If there's a lengthy time period and somebody needs to comment. Because we've called, we've asked people before.
Right.
And we've done that with our existing policies. Okay, any other? Anything else?
How does that time work? We have two examples, so I'm just wondering. There's a preference of one over the other. Are we talking more example two and when there's the or?
I was looking at example two.
Okay. How would time work with that? Would you really allow a set amount of time for public comment, right?
That's correct, yes.
So how would the time work? Is that if someone talks, two comments, it starts at six minutes from the 30 minutes? Like how does that, how would we structure that? Do we know there? Do you know how much time you want? Is that board discretion? Yeah, I think so. And I think that the 30 minutes is like a pretty good total. Yeah. So if it's our and for all policies. But if we have too many, we can't get to them. We can also always table it for the next sentence and ensure that there's more comment.
Have we done that before?
So if you open it up at the beginning and people comment about any of the agenda items, then we're saying later on, we're going to say, okay, I can come together in a agenda item?
That's what we're saying.
I don't know if that's necessary. You know, it may just become redundant with what, like, you know, somebody has a really good point. I mean, our public has excellent points and they say it's on, like, for the seven hour meeting.
Right.
You know, and that, and excuse me, can't, we're not interacting with the public. The caveat is, it's a meeting held in the public. And I think there's clarified questions I haven't had. You're right, I would agree with that. But I don't think that's the normal or the intention that I've ever thought of, you know, interacting with the public. Like if I needed clarification on something, I mean, that's the part that will be opening the agenda to the public so they will know more about what they're talking about before they, they'll be able to prepare that.
Well, and hopefully, the agenda seems to help his hands prior to, sorry, to actually contacted a board member prior to.
Yeah.
Correct. I mean, that's happened, you know, it's happened not, not by policy, but by life in the past.
Could we give community members a choice? Do you have the choice to speak at the beginning or if you feel it would be more relevant to speak during this specific agenda item? I don't know how the time...
I would rather have it just at the beginning, right?
Or at the end, like one or another second.
You can do it at the beginning or the end.
Yeah, I don't know, but, you know, stopping each time to make sure I told somebody. Because if we miss somebody, then I'm going to feel horrible too saying, you know, you didn't, we told you to set time up. Now you gotta stand up there waving your hand like, hey, you forgot me, you know? And I, I think if we just do beginning and get the comments out of the way, then we'll be able to have the information in front of us and not have to think... Because I write stuff down. When someone's speaking, I definitely, I've got notes.
Because remember that when you do a policy, it will come up for a first reading.
Yeah.
And they can comment on it that time. And there's a secondary, and it's finally adopted. So you would have it in...
And when we'd have really like hot button topics.
Correct.
When we were trying to decide whether we were going to continue virtual learning or not.
Correct.
That was its own specific meeting. So every comment was about, about that.
Right.
We had to make special meetings where it's just that topic too.
If there is a part of the meeting, like for my budget meeting, that's a separate hearing within the meeting. So that stops and there's a comment on that one, right? There's a couple like that.
Right.
We have those special meetings within, we come basically throughout the year.
So really, on policies, this question there, look at the chance to comment possibly a different time, correct? Unless you pass something right away. Correct.
Within the public, public comment proportion?
Correct.
Is that what you'd like me to bring back for the first reading?
That's what I would say.
Example two? What we're thinking, what is the meeting first?
Okay, next is item 2C, policy for public comment. Public comment, yes.
Public.
So this is Nick.
Yeah, this is Policy 1305. Policy for public comment. We do currently have a policy on this, but there have been some adjustments to that. So on your attachment in green is what now meets the criteria of what that requirement is. So taking away the idea that the public comment has to be about a board agenda item and that they can publicly comment on their choice of what they would like to speak on within the limits and stuff.
One thing that does concern me about the draft of this is that it states that there will be no exchange between the presenter and individual board members. This is an opportunity for the board to listen to the public. So like if we were to have a, like a clarifying question that would limit board members to be able to ask those questions.
Which item is it now?
K. It's in green, it's highlighted in green.
How do we deal with that now? If a board member has a question based on a public statement? I think the nature is to, at this point, we don't, I ask the board, but we don't make you two clarifying comments during public expression or public comment.
I think K more of the back and forth. Like we're not to get into the public members is how I take on K. K, because when I read it, it says there's no exchange between. So it's, that's more of like a, you know, like a, you're going to go back and forth with someone as opposed to just a clarifying question, you know, clarifying question.
Right, but we have gone back and forth and just gotten clarification from, for example, in January, we had asked, you know, for more clarification about their technology in January, we had asked, you know, for more clarification about their technology, and we did engage back and forth with them. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, and it did result in a good outcome for the teachers to be able to meet the needs of the students. So I would hate to be, you know, if it's not an issue right now, I just don't.
That was during the agenda item though, right? Not during public comment?
Right, that was the end.
But it wasn't.
It really wasn't on the agenda though.
It wasn't on the agenda, but we allow it, right? It's even more refreshing, so, I mean, I guess that kind of, call me if there's further questions.
Yeah, and I think that is allowed, so.
So my question is, are we going to, the old policy was A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, person goes to L, and then five points. So is the presiding officer going to read the entire thing?
Because I think it's too long already. I stopped listening halfway through, and I think it's way too long.
Yes.
I can't, I can't.
We want to have a shortened phrase, we don't normally sit and read all the policies. So we could, I know that when our previous president, he didn't read all of it, he would shorten that, so you're welcome to.
So noted, so noted.
There is a heart in here that I thought should be removed. Let me see, okay, it's under I, where it says, "The public comment period is not to be used for political purposes. Examples of violations may include comments about offices being pursued, party affiliation, political action groups, et cetera. Additionally, political apparel, signs, flyers, et cetera are forbidden." But I think we need to remove political apparel, because who's going to enforce that? I mean, I just think it's, I don't, actually, we could remove, I don't see, we don't even have an issue with signs, flyers, et cetera. But I don't think anybody's going to, if somebody's wearing whatever political T-shirt, are we going to say that that's not allowed here?
Well, J is more what the intent of the old policy was, which is profanity and disruptive behavior. I don't know what I think about that one. I don't know how you'd enforce it.
I could see it becoming very subjective, very fast.
What'd you say?
It could be, be a becoming subjective very fast, and then who's to say, right? So if we allow all or any, obviously, we have lots of problems with that right now. I'm kidding. I don't know, I agree with Nessa, I think that line could be removed.
Just the et cetera, or just sorry, the additional after that? Yeah, so the beginning of I is fine, so no purpose of portable violations, but just to avoid the additional political.
Right.
Behind this policy, the board, speaking from experience, I think.
They can probably get the line notes, right?
That's right.
So after et cetera, will we do after?
Yeah, yes, please. But I think the, what you were saying, J, that would fine to me, a personal attack, profanity, we're sort of, I think that one is fine.
Just think it would go down to K instead of L. There you go. Anybody else know? I think it's great. Good.
You're doing it.
And it's another first reading.
Yep.
Now we have 2B, visitor policy, and policy 8500, visitors to school buildings. In January 2025, there was a discussion of ICE getting sent to school buildings, and looking at our handbook and found this is an area that we are lacking. We do not have a policy that talks about what to do when people visit the buildings. Believe that we had to make some adjustments a little while back as the laws with CPS changed, and so inclusion in this policy is some ideas to help with visitors in general for the board to consider. And ISBA also just sent us some samples to help with police and law enforcement to help. So, Mrs. Smith, you have any other comments?
No, I think that the police and law enforcement probably is going to be the next one a little bit more specifically, where this one is more about those visitors to your building, to our buildings in general, in general visitors, but also those that maybe are there for another purpose that we want to just make sure we define how to handle that. So there's, I think, four examples on here for you to look at, and from ISBA.
Any comments? What do you think? Crickets in here.
Oh, there's just.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, I think I, I had noted that I was then with example two or number, number two or number three, but I also thought adding the additional thing at the end was example four, but I felt like example four could actually be added on, and it was about the principal being authorized to refuse entry, and I thought that that should, that could be added on to two or three.
I agree with, go ahead, Nick, have a discussion, because I like Warren.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and I think over the years, we've understood some of these, I, we've seen these in the past and not taken a visitor policy before, because we wanted our buildings to be open, and there weren't the number of things that were happening in society today. So I'm all game for it. I remember seeing these policies in the past and thinking, boy, that policy is aimed right, and he is a school board member, and, and I, the only time, where's Nate at? Oh, there he is. The only time I could ever remember getting in trouble was when a parent called Nate and said, who's the old man that was handing out candy? Jiltiest charge, and they had to explain, well, that's for the rest of the world, and he's done this for several years, and it's okay.
Just don't follow him, please, Nick.
Just don't follow him, please. Never let anybody out of your building for, but actually, in the last two years, Chris hasn't had to deal with that nor a few, because I've taken a different posture on it. Plus, it was getting real expensive, just for, wow, thousands of pieces of candy every year.
Yeah, but you would still be allowed to do that, you would just have to let him know how to do it.
No, I know, I know, and even with this file, with one, you would, with one, you would too. I mean, I, I made the idea, the intent of one is visitor in the building, you should have a badge in, and I always checked in, except I didn't with you. I might have checked in with the secretary.
That's right.
You were probably chasing somebody around.
So, Bob, you would say, you're recommending, your recommendation of the example one, would you then add four to that?
Well, I think it takes four into consideration, I mean.
One takes, you're saying it takes it into consideration.
Let it go, wait, let it go.
Yeah, just add some more weight to it.
I was commenting on two, not on four, four is the other one you said.
You were commenting on one, right, before adding four to it. Right, adding four to it. I had thought four could be added to two or three, but.
Yeah, I think four is fine too. Add four to one, yeah, then it's still only one side of a piece of paper instead of three. Then with, any other comments?
I originally liked two more.
Okay, well, speak up.
You know, it encourages parents and citizens of districts to, just talks about, in order to ensure there's no unauthorized persons entering school with wrongful intentions, unauthorized persons school property will report to the prince, or will report to the principal, and then I can talk about school board members visiting school, encourages members to visit corporations, school buildings, but they should be scheduled to the principal or designated. I just feel like it gives the principal back their building without making it feel like, you know, I would come in and not let them know I'm there. They have the right to know I'm there. You know, if I'm coming in to meet with a teacher or to have conversation, if I'm in there as a parent, in the capacity with my three kids, you know, they should know that's the rule in there for, pick them up when they're sick. So I have just taken it, for me, and I like two better.
I guess my, my question to you is, how is one different from that? You're still, you're still signing it, you're still.
Yeah, but I love the community, you know, and the teachers know my distance as, my role as a school board member is that I've checked in with their principal, and that I know what role and what capacity is there. Am I there as a parent? Am I there to ask questions? Am I, like, what is my role? Because we set up meetings, we've had Dr. Keith set up meetings, we would talk to staff, and like, they know when those meetings are coming, and staff know how to plan and prepare for those. So I just liked feeling like we knew what the general public would do, we know that as board members, we also have our own rules to abide by and follow, which means when we visit, principals and other staff are company on the visit, and they also know the purpose of the coming point with school programs, personality, everything. So it gives them back their building without me having to, I mean, I have rules just like my parents have. And it directs the board member, if you have a concern, that you should give your concern to the superintendent and not the, not the principal while you're visiting, so. I mean, they've got their own stuff going on all the time, and I, you know, when I come in, I want them to know, like, hey, I set this up, I, my intent was to come when you have time, if I interfered, you know, if I was coming to ask a question or inquire about something, like, they would set time kind of aside where it's not like, oh, your whole day is chaotic, and by the way, I'm here, and you have to stop everything and talk to me. I would never want that to make them go away. So that would be my intent, is that, that's what I said, because I'm going as the capacity of a board member.
Have we had an issue like that before in this?
You're shaking your head.
Report with words like you, or do you? I like example number two, my only question, and it allows to, and it specifically calls out, right, I'm new to the community, I'm volunteering with the PTO, like, I'm showing up tomorrow for the big fire, but I shot you an email to let you know, like, I think that's appropriate because I am a parent, but I'm also a board member, and like, that would be a little.
Right, what are you here for?
Just common courtesy, right? Because it's your organization's building, so we want you to be aware, we're going to be there for whatever reason, I think that seems polite.
Or like, I'm the National Honor Society sponsor at Houssen, so I have meetings.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
But I, I guess I would clarify, when I'm there as a National Honor Society sponsor, I'm not a board member.
Different roles, different roles.
Right, so when I came, so when I came there for my daughter's Valentine party, was that one of the times when it was?
Did you sign it in the office?
No, I didn't, but here's the thing, I was never told candy, but I, now I know. It was, it was, it was just a very cold day, and it was a very rushed day, so I apologize for that, that was definitely not my intent. But when they gave me this badge, I also didn't, wasn't given parameters on what, and I was a staff member there, or we, or when I was a teacher there, I would just walk across. So is that the rule for the teachers too, when they walk across to meet? I can't forget that, that was not a board flex, it was a, just a, it was cold out, 93-year-old with me, I apologize for that.
That's probably a safety thing, right? You know, like, who's in your buildings, if there's a drill or something else going on, like, I want to make sure you guys know I'm there, so I can get to you too, because I don't do those drills.
Our school resource officer is in agreement, shaking his head, that should be done. So, what do you think of the example two?
And add four?
Add four?
Yeah. Two and four.
Is there any language that is concerning to anyone in example two?
Well, I have a problem with, that somebody has to accompany the board member on the visit, because I was in SRT, I was a, I was a resource person, I was a variety of different things. Did you feel like you had that problem with me?
Me?
Yeah.
You signed it in the office, I knew.
Did you, Chris, to me?
When you're there, you're also like, knowing your role, with that, that you were planning to be there.
Right, I understand.
So like, this is when you're just, you know, showing up.
It's like, to me, this is a little bit of overkill.
I thought, yeah, so that part, are you going to add to it?
What's that?
So is there anything to add to that, like, you know, if the visit is not planned, or? Like, for example, I go and visit my husband for lunch, maybe once every other month, once a month, something like that, so I do typically badge into the office, but during the Valentine Day party, I badge in, it was very cold, and I parked in the middle, it was not a normal situation, but I parked in the middle of the two schools, bashed into one side door, bashed into the other door of the elementary, just to keep my daughter out of the elementary, so there I was. I've never done that before, but it was just, you know, like I said, there wasn't really parameters given when I was given the badge. I thought that I was doing something that was within the guidelines. Right, and then, yeah, and now that I know, so other than that, like, you know.
What's that, you read?
I was just seeking to maybe strike that sentence about having to be accompanied if you, if you've done all the other things here.
Right.
Someone's aware, they know they're there, they know.
Yeah, that's fine, that strikes, seems like overkill to me, yeah.
We know they're in the building.
Yeah. So we're doing two and four with striking L.
Can we be clear that? Okay, I guess that last paragraph, right, is what clarifies that if you're there as a parent, you need to be sure your visit, just to make sure we have language in there, we're going to the office and registering. Because I don't, it's not in there. On example two, specifically under, like, the board member visits to schools, it says, "It encourages us to visit, should be scheduled, purpose of becoming acquainted," absolutely, the last two sentences. Board members who have children in the schools have parental opportunities to confront with their child, teacher, counselor, admin. In those instances, the board member should make it clear he's visiting as a parent and not as a member of the board, and thus, it doesn't say this, but, and thus, then the general public rules should apply, right? So like, you can badge in, just go to the office and, right?
Ninety, ninety-nine, I might go to the office, yeah.
Yeah, you can take that one.
Good, making progress. I'm good with that.
So we are going to add that wording at the end. Is that what you're saying?
That's a recommendation.
Yeah, so we're adding, and then, or in thus, the general public rules apply, however, it gets those specifics, whatever steps for this. Okay, so I have the example two, strike the principal, or another staff member will accompany the board member on visit, add the general public rules apply, and then pull example four up to be behind that. So, last question, sorry. I know I talked to somebody about, like, reactivating the visiting chores and things like that, so when we do that, we would not be accompanied by a principal or a staff member, we'd kind of just be wandering on our own, correct?
We always went to a room, we went to a sign room.
We went to a central location in South Africa.
Okay.
They would, sometimes, they're kind enough, principals, doesn't it, kind enough to give us a little tour?
Yeah.
So that's what we, but we'll get a definite.
Well, that keeps us from tying up their whole day.
Well, but actually, most of the principals, principals, every time we ever did it, we initiated it in Washington and ran on to other places. Principals intentionally backed off so the teachers could say, and.
Right, 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 right.
Anybody in there with common sense, in any position wants their employees to be able to be honest.
Free speech.
So anyway. All right, well, now, we'll move on to 2E, policy for working with law enforcement visiting buildings, and this is policy 4420, police relations. And I'm going to let Mrs. Smith talk a little bit more about that.
Yep, we do not currently have this policy, so this would be new, and so there are several, I think, seven examples here on different perspectives of, again, with the culture that we're in right now, possible visits by ICE or something other agency, et cetera, investigations that are going on. So I don't know what input the board has for development of this policy.
Which one did you like?
Which one did you hate?
Maybe we can just cross off them, or like, no, we don't like it?
Yeah.
One of the things that I had sent to everybody with the Department of Child Services, policy about interviewing the child alone, that has, I sent you the policy on that, I just want to ensure that that is included in whatever, their, their law is, you know, that we're following that as well, and that's added.
I have a question on that. Is a law enforcement officer also there then?
No.
So my concern would be if there is suspected child abuse, and we're trying, like, I don't want to leave that child alone with a stranger, right? So is it not in the best interest of the child for them to have some advocate there that knows them in at least some way? I understand your point too, I'm very split on this, and welcome to hearing thoughts, but my concern would be, this child has already had trauma, the last thing we want to do is make them feel that they need to go be alone with this stranger and talk about something that is going to be very hard or sensitive for them.
In 10 years of being a Department of Child Services investigator, I can tell you that I've never ran into an issue with the schools having, you know, put any type of restrictions on this, it's pretty, you know, we're trained to interview students to do it in a way that, you know, is very, you know, it feels like very, you know, welcoming environment. The issue with having a law enforcement agency there, or having a, perhaps like, school principal present, or social worker present, is then, then that student no longer has that privacy to be able to state what types of. has that privacy to be able to state what types of, you know, what is going on in her home. Um and so, you know, with the policy from the Department of Child Services is pretty clear, um so I just, I mean, I can get into more detail about that, but I feel that we should be following that policy.
We already have that policy though. That's separate. Correct. We already have a policy based on CPS to meet with children and we don't have to write anything.
Chris, you just.
I did do well. I thought, I thought.
I thought.
We had a policy that's a mandate state statewide, it wasn't one that we.
Okay.
Even had, so what this is is separate, this is.
Well, that's even break down into.
This is what police, yes, it's a.
Yeah, but it does, it does kind of give a little bit of vagueness as to just being.
Forty-four thirty, we have a separate policy, interviews of students by child services.
So this would be just relations with police, so tends to the title would be police relations, not, you know, CPS relations.
Well, it's police and law enforcement.
I don't know that I'd want to blend it too, because the roles are different.
No, I wouldn't want to either, I just want to ensure that, um because when I worked at Washington, there was an issue where the principal, um this was years ago, but um you know, they had said, no, I have to be present and it was, it sabotaged.
We applies broadly, I think this is so broad that it could hold to a school that doesn't have an SRO. So the fact that we do have an SRO, they would likely come in and sort of like take over. Does that make sense?
So you still want to add?
I still like five.
The first paragraph, five.
Uh willing, if now I use better wording on that, you didn't, you don't like it saying legal custody of students, so.
Local princess, basically just means that when the children are at school, that the um, you know, the staff there acts as if, you know, in the best interest of the children as they as if they were their own child, is what local princess, I mean, that's just to summarize it. Um because legal custody is a lot different than just, that would mean that the school during the day would have to be responsible for like medical bills and all this other stuff.
Two, so legal custody is a different.
Yeah, okay. Good. So summarize it for me, because I'm old.
Okay, so we're going with three. We are adding the first paragraph of example five.
To the beginning.
To the beginning, taking the word legal custody and changing it to local princess.
Good.
No, hold on.
Oh, here we go.
I almost like the. It almost looks like these are two different things. So one, the first thing ends after example three, and the second part of that is interrogations, which is starts with example four going down. So you almost have to pick two. It looks like, that's how it seems like to me.
Yeah, like one or two, and then, one, two, or three, and then it was like four, five, it's two parts.
Yes.
You got that, Bob?
Yep.
So if you're choosing five, do you want all of five as the second part of that?
No.
Right, just that paragraph? To go together to make that bulk?
Yeah.
Okay.
I kind of like that on example one, it says the school should permit interviews um when non-school hours, like we gave, like they have to show that it was impossible and practical or would unruly interfere with the law enforcement. Like I I I don't want it to be so, you know, it's disruptive to the school day for students and again, we have a job to educate students. I just feel like with that, at least we could, they'd have to prove that it's impossible and practical or unruly to interfere with the investigation before they could come. So they'd have to prove that to our staff before it happens. That like one.
So that is the second paragraph.
I like the second, yeah, that's, so I like five, one, and then the second paragraph would almost be the second paragraph on example one, that makes sense. And I don't even mind three, but then I think we need to go back to in that example three.
Okay.
So this is kind of, it's a lot of back and forth. Right? We like take these comments, put together a.
Right, and take a look at it. That's ready for first read. Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
Let's say that again, just, are you going to write it out? Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah. They'll end up blending, yeah.
Okay.
We get to see it in the first read.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
You're good. All right. Next, uh, Nick, I think this is you, uh, elementary class sizes staff.
This was an agenda item that was put on by the board. Um I can speak to our process, um but we're not at a place right now in the buildings that we are, we've been having our discussions yet on class sizes and numbers, um that's kind of coming up this month, but it has not happened yet, so we have not made those decisions. We're still scheduling, well, working on scheduling, um the elementary, we haven't had any of those discussions, so I can, I think it came based off of some numbers that were shared. Um so I don't know if it was the pleasure of the board that I just share with you the process and we can talk.
I think that you know, and these numbers, these are current numbers, for an ideal numbers, this is where we stand today, but it could be quite different.
Today, correct. Um so as we move forward into determining class sizes in the next month to kind of looking at all the details, we're going to gather the enrollment data of the upcoming school year, so shift those kids forward a year and look at at where we're at. Um we're going to hope, beyond hope, that we get great kindergarten numbers and kind of, that's always a gray box for us for a while until like August 12th. Um but we're going to analyze those numbers of sections at grade levels to kind of look at, um those sections, we're going to look at the historical class sizes and trends and projections along with the target set of um class size data that we have that the board has kind of asked us to look at. Uh that then goes to looking at discussions with our principals, talking about specific needs within the grade levels. Um each group's kind of their own individual sometimes, looking at those special circumstances, what are the student makeups of those groups, are there any concerns or things that are going to impact class sizes? Uh we also take time to talk with our discussion with our teachers union. So we talk through um what those class size numbers look like, um what are any instructional concerns, any resource allocation concerns that they have, and try to work through and address any of those. Um and then we kind of come to what we might say a final class size decision, but it's not final really until kids show up and we really know who's here, but we look at all of that, the enrollment data, principal feedback, union input, um to kind of determine those right-sized classes. Um and then obviously it fluctuates in August where we're trying to balance those needs out based on who actually showed up and, you know, who is not maybe not coming back as we wait, and that, we wait a little while before, maybe a week or so before, two weeks before we really know if they're not not returning.
It's why we have a count date on October 1st, because it's changed so much to the beginning of the school year, it's finalized, sort of finalized throughout the year as well.
And I know that I shared some of these thoughts already with the board, but in looking at these numbers, um a couple of things stood out to me, um was the teacher to student ratio at the three schools, um being higher, Washington Township seems to be, um you know, have the highest teacher to um student ratio. In addition to that, their literacy scores for their grade literacy were at seventy-eight percent. Um Morgan was at ninety-three point six, I believe, and House is at ninety-five point seven, so they met their state goal for twenty twenty-four. I noticed the goal for um for the elementary schools is to be at ninety-five percent. Um and also I noticed that um we have at Washington Township Elementary, they have the highest uh ELL students, so English Language Learner students, um is at ten. So um I just in looking at class sizes and things like that, um another thing that came to mind was the amount of rental properties in Washington Township, in comparison to the other two townships. Um and I don't know exact numbers, but I can tell you that Washington Township has um four hundred and seven apartment buildings, which may seem very challenging when, um you know, when looking at, I don't want to say challenge, it's a unique challenge, um but just, you know, those numbers are a little bit, the Washington Township numbers are possibly going to be fluctuating more due to the amount of rentals in Washington Township specifically because of that. Um in addition, we have Williamsburg Manor, I believe it's called, um they also have quite a few rental properties. Um so, you know, I just, I hope that those types of, those types of things are being considered when we're looking at numbers because um what we may plan at the beginning of the school year, um as we know, you know, they've had an influx of students and that impacts, you know, so it may have looked like a like a solid decision back in April or whenever those decisions were made, but there was move-ins and unfortunately, a lot of those move-ins, um they come with higher needs, those students are, you know, have higher needs. So I hope that that's considered when we're um when we're looking at class sizes because um you heard it's been a pretty big struggle.
I'd say that's absolutely part of the process and and one of the reasons that Washington Township's the only one that has an English Language Learner A in the building where that's not available in the other ones, because we, that was based off of a conversation and of a of a need, so.
Right, but even though with the aid and, you know, I understand that that was um something that was unique to Washington, you know, they do have the highest class sizes um across the board, especially with kindergarten, um first grade, fifth grade, um were pretty pretty big. And so we're looking at literacy goals, um and our being at Washington at seventy-eight percent, I would just hope that, you know, we would try to get our class sizes to look more in line with perhaps House or Morgan, smaller class sizes and they have a higher literacy rate.
I I guess my comment to that, I agree with you, but my comment to that would be, I've studied long enough to watch that swing from one school to another, and the next year we get the request, so hopefully we can address it. But because I thought, I thought our upper elementary classes were playing big when we made the decision. But I also know that the test scores, the class cohorts from year to year change so much that is this true or not, principals, that you see from year to year, you're either first, second, or third, and you may, and then you hear it from your parents and you hear it from us and and hopefully we put a teacher or two or address it, so it's, it's, it isn't like it's been ongoing, because a year ago I was hearing from House.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not disputing that, I just, when we're looking at numbers, I just hope that, you know, as opposed to just students and class sizes, that we're looking at more, you know, just a more holistic approach and looking at all different angles and Washington Township, out of the, um, you know, residents of House and Morgan, can correct me on this, but we do have the largest, um, uh, you know, largest amount of rental properties, so that can really make things fluctuate pretty quickly um when we're looking at that.
I think, thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely part of the of the conversation, for sure.
Okay. Now, math teachers' specific software. Assistant.
Yeah, and that, I don't quite know if that is coming from the the CERF software survey? Is that where that's?
Um.
We were asked to survey the staff on their software usage.
It's coming from both and um Mr. Bell had read a letter from his wife, I personally use Cuda software both at Washington and at Morgan as a special education teacher. Um it's a very valuable resource for teachers to be able to do remedial work and things like that. Um it was just, um, you know, to to think that that would be taken away, um, as, you know, for special education teachers, for math teachers would be, um, would really be negatively, I feel, impacting the the children. And, um, you know, being that, I know that we have the ability, I believe Mrs. Bell has said that it was, it had to be connected to the desktop computer, but at the last meeting you said that there is a web-based.
I'm doing some research to see if that's the case, but um and let me, I'll come back around to that. I just wanted to share, since we were asked to do the software survey, um I provided that data to you. Uh we had a total of seventy-six responses. Um out of that, sixty-one percent said they did not use teaching-specific software. Um there were twenty-nine respondents that did, so their breakdown is down below. Um when we talk about Cuda, there was one program or from Cuda Math that was down there, um and it is called, I want to get the right thing, Affinity Math. So Cuda has different branches off of it, some geometry and all different ones. So we had one person that answered this that utilized that, I think there's a few more, but they just.
Four that used regular Cuda and then the other one was.
Yeah, they, I don't know if they did respond to the survey, we only had one respondent in the survey mention anything related to that.
Oh, that was different than what you meant.
In the breakdown of the data, Dr. Keith had said that.
From the first survey we did last year.
Oh, but maybe this other one.
And then this was the new one that you had requested. So in the new one, then there was only one responded. Um if, and I think we're, we're at a place where if there are really specific needs like that, um and there are possibilities to put a device in the building that could be utilized for that, might not be everyone, because it's not needed by everyone. So is there a way to provide some access that that program could be on? It's something that we can discuss, because when we look at biggest stewards of our funds, you know, where does that lie? Is it, we need a a subscription for billing? Do we need like, so looking at how do we work individually with those folks to try to provide that need?
Well, and also, the teachers that filled it out in the fall, that was original survey?
That one was last year.
Okay, so they may not, I'm just saying, like, you know, I don't, how many responses did you get?
This one had seventy-six.
Okay, so we have two hundred and, yeah, so I'm just wondering if that maybe they didn't get to the survey as early as year. I don't know how many people responded last year, I don't think we have that many teachers that would have responded.
One thing I wanted to know, and.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just a little concerned that we only have three teachers using Skyward.
Skyward's not software.
Okay, okay.
So many of the respondents didn't quite understand that what they were replying to is not software. So much of the stuff on here is available on my phone, I mean, it's on any web-based device, so when you say software, sometimes folks think of anything I use on the computer.
Okay, we didn't provide a list or anything.
I didn't want to limit them, yeah. Yeah, so I literally went and tallied every single thing that they mentioned and put it all on here.
I know at Washington alone, um Dr. Texira uses Cuda, um Beth Bell uses Cuda, and Barb Paris uses Cuda. So those are three right there, so I don't know if the other two didn't fill out the survey, but yeah.
What's our, what's our process for something like that? If there's additional technology needs or software for specific teachers that you don't, we don't need two hundred some licenses or we need three or four, what, how does that work?
It depends on what it is and what it's connected to. Um a lot of times they'll make a request, be it to their principal or to me or to technology, and we'll work to see, we have a grant that can pay for that, how, how can we, you know, high ability can pay for some AP things and those types of things, so how and where can we find those funds to be available for them, do we have that availability? Yeah. So it comes from a couple of different directions, but it just depends on, you know, how large the need is.
Okay, but they do have opportunities to sing out, like if there's something that would be very beneficial to make the case, that even if we're saying.
We talk about that often, that like, hey, here's something that maybe a couple of people want, how can we make that work? Do we have funds?
Because from the comments heard tonight, it seems like it's pretty critical, I would not want to spend my evenings making up that problems, right?
Okay.